Thank you. All right, we have the consent agenda, and so do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? All right, motion passes seven zero. I'm sorry? Six, six. Zero. All right, we're at regular agenda, which is quite short tonight. Consideration and possible action to approve Resolution 2022-R-08, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Manville, Texas, adopting a schedule of fees, rates, deposits, and other charges for zoning, plating, building, and other related matters, and repealing all resolutions in conflict herewith and other related matters. Deska.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So the resolution before you for the fee changes includes some changes in fees. It includes some reorganization, and then also some of our permits that we have, or processes that we have that have really never been captured on the fee schedule, but have been adopted elsewhere. A great example of that is a PUD. We've always had a fee for a PUD. It's in an ordinance from 2009, but we've never actually had it reflected on the fee schedule. So there's a bit of some cleanup with it in addition to some changes and breakouts of fees. So the first proposal before you is a change in the certificate of occupancy fee. We currently charge $100, so we're proposing to change that to $150 for a change of occupancy, and that would really put us on par with some of our neighboring cities, such as Pearland and Missouri City, with their charging $150 in Pearland and $180 in Missouri City. So we're just trying to stay on the same level with some of our neighboring cities with that. Again, the PUD fee, those are captured in ordinance number 200907, and it's just been put on the fee schedule. So this is not anything new that we've been charging. Plat extensions, we did a little bit of cleanup and clarification on it. This is a no-charge fee, but we made a change that instead of saying for preliminary plots only, it's just a plat extension fee, because an extension can be made as a request for either preliminary or a final. But again, that's a no-cost fee. Our plat resubmital fees, right now, we don't charge a fee. So to give you sort of an example, if a plat is brought before the Planning, Development, and Zoning Commission, and that plat is not approved, they have the opportunity to correct those items for which the plat was not approved. Well, when it's brought in for staff to review, there's no fee that's charged. In some instances, it may not be a big deal, because we'll get it pretty quickly after. Some developers, and then in the case of just sort of extenuating circumstances, maybe with construction, we may not see these plats again for six months. In some cases, eight months. So it really is like looking at it all over again to get yourself familiar with all the moving pieces and parts. So there's really, there's opportunity there where there's a lot of staff work that's going in, but we're not, we're not charging a fee. We did some research, and we saw neighboring cities, such as Pearland, charges a $200 fee for that. So secondly, maybe if someone has a fee associated with a resubmital, then perhaps they may, maybe more advantageous to have it correct the first time it comes through, rather than sort of working the system, as I would call it. A driveway permit fee. So right now, we recognize on there is if you're on a texted road, and that's a $500 fee. So we broke this up, so it matches pretty much what we have in our design criteria manual, where we do permit residential driveways, and then also commercial driveways. So a residential driveway being $100, and a commercial driveway being $150. The texted road fees remain the same at 500. We didn't change anything as far as cost, but what was known as a fill dirt permit, we reworded that, so it's a development permit fee. But essentially, it's the same thing as far as bringing dirt onto that site, whether you're in the floodplain or whether you're outside the floodplain. We've put on here a coin-operated machine tax fee. This is a fee that's always been collected, but was not captured on the fee schedule. The current fee from which we charge is $15 per machine. We're asking for an increase to $50 per machine. With some of the research that we've done, it's a $50 per machine fee in Angleton, $115 in Texas City, and then the Texas Administrative Code itself charges $60 per machine. You may ask what this is for. This is for any of our game rooms that have to come in and have each of those machines permitted. It can be a tedious task, you know, if you've got, you know, 20 or so machines in a business. One of the big ones that we did here were the health inspections and the permit fees. This was currently housed in Exhibit B, which was fire prevention. And it was thrown in with fire prevention, because as you know, Fire Marshal's Office and Code Enforcement were two departments that were married together. And we've separated that out, so we thought it was appropriate to put it within the rest of the sort of development-related permits. There's two things that sort of changed. Before, we looked at establishments that were less than 1,000 square feet for a price, and then anything that was over 1,000 square feet. What we looked at with some of our neighboring cities is there's really a breakdown according to square footage, so a large, a medium, and a small. So for example, if you're looking at HEB, and HEB coming in and that permit, there's a lot, lot more work that's going to go into looking at that HEB, rather than maybe, you know, a small, a small restaurant. So we just put it accordingly to that, that square footage, and I'll just run over that real quick with you. So for small establishment, it's a $200 fee, which I believe was the same fee that we were charging before. The medium went up to 400 from 300, which was anything that was over 1,000. And then large became its own category, with it being at $600. Also lumped in with every food establishment were your nonprofits, and also any sort of group residence. We singled out daycare, and daycares were, you know, whether you, you know, were cooking food or just sort of heating up food on there. It doesn't matter, and inspection's an inspection. So we took daycare, and we just, we kept it the same as $150, but it's just if you're daycare. And then recognizing that, you know, trying to have a break for nonprofits, with that being $100, and then a group residence with $150. We also added in here temporary food establishment, because we have the same language that we also beefed up within that ordinance. So now we have a $50 fee. Our reinspection fees have remained the same at $150. But what's new in here is owner-initiated inspection at $150. So this is where you will have the inspector go, and they may say, "Okay, well, you've got a B grade on here." Well, the owner has that opportunity to say, "Well, I would like another inspection, because I want to, I think I can improve my grade," or "I know I can improve my grade." Well, they can come to us, and they can pay for that. And then if they get an A, they get an A, or if it would, to remain the same. But it gives them the opportunity to bump up that grade, because establishments really want to do that. And then what also we have here is a change in ownership for a food establishment. This got brought up with the last ordinance in 2000, I'm sorry, ordinance 017, that just went on consent, where we talked about prorating these fees. So if we've got a change in ownership, and that change in ownership happens in January, but the permit started in June, well, we prorated that, so it's now half the fee. So we took every one of these fees that's listed above, and the permit will start July 1st, and it'll be until the end of next year. So if that timeframe from July 1st to December 31st you come in for the change of ownership, you're paying the full fee. But you'll get a break in half the fee, starting January 1st towards the end of the year. So that's why this is pretty lengthy, because we wanted to recognize that prorate on that. One of the, the ninth item that we've changed or added were the annual rental permit fees. So we've got, we require if you're a rental in the city, that you have to be registered. Currently, there is no fee that is charged for this. It is very typical to get a submittal of these annual permits of upwards of 150 to 200 at one time, and we don't collect any revenue off of it, nor do we acknowledge the work that's put into this. So we've done some research, and we've put forward proposing a fee of $50 per unit. We also want to acknowledge that the convenience fee has been reduced from three and a half percent to 3%, so that's a change on there. That is due to the fact that we've gotten some new terminals from the, because of the migrant gov upgrade, and that fee has been reduced. Lastly, there are some changes to fire safety and prevention in Exhibit B, and I will turn that over to Fire Marshal Joe Murray to give you more information. Thank you. Thank you.
Before we do that, I just want to not lose grasp of what I was going to ask you about. You said group homes.
Group, I think it was group residence.
Sorry. Okay.
Uh, group residence, yes, a group residence. So whether that be, what's the right terminology to use for that? I don't know if it's necessarily a group home, but I mean, you may have like a foster home, something that needs inspection on here. So we're recognizing that with it, so as just not being a food establishment based on square footage. We do, we do have some that we have in the city. We do have some.
Okay. Thank you. Your turn, Joe.
In regards to the fee changes related to the Fire Marshal's Office, one of the big things I looked at was how our design professionals, when they're submitting plans, were going to be looking at these. So I went through and took some rearranging and grouped them better related to the systems. So some of the fees changed there, and the groupings have changed. In addition, one of the previous ordinances approved for us to be able to collect operational permits, and that's something that we had not been doing in the past. So that's something that we're working towards now to start requiring for the businesses. The change in that is, instead of it being on a certain timeframe for a year, they're an annual permit. So if they get the permit this month, it wouldn't be due again until next year. The other requirement I have is, is they have a past fire inspection before they're able to post that permit. In addition to that, we looked at the systems as well related to all of the other types of fire protection. And of course, as Jessica stated, we pulled the health inspection part of out of it. So now it's specifically related to the Fire Marshal's Office. In addition, I broke up some of the permits to include daycare, just as the development service is done as well. Then one of the other ones is, the big one is related to what we call place of occupancy, or excuse me, place of assembly. I broke that down by occupant load. So there are certain ranges. There's an occupant C, or Assembly C, Assembly B, and Assembly A. And that group is listed in there. So as you progress from 50 to 300, that would be an Assembly C. 301 to 1,000 is an Assembly B, and then over 1,000 would be considered an Assembly A. And those are annual permits, and those are also based on past fire inspections.
Any questions? Discussion?
The proposal can be July 1st.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
All right, and that is with the amendment for the start date, uh huh, of July 1st. All those in favor? All those opposed? And the motion carries six zero. Thank you very much. Thank you, Jessica and Joe. I know that was a lot of tedious work on your part, but it does bring us up to speed, and that's important for all of us, and, you know, for the city to, to be capturing what they need. All right. Number two, consideration and possible action to approve a subdivision variance request to Section 62-113 sidewalks for property located at 6835 Old Chocolate Bayou Road, and authorize the mayor to execute the development agreement. I assume this is a Jessica?
Um, so last year, you, the council approved a variance request for the same exact address at 6835 Old Chocolate Bayou Road. And that was from Section 62111, which has to do with construction of a budding roads. That variance was granted with conditions. So we were kind of fast-forwarded now here with further development of this property, and it's come up about sidewalks. There are currently no sidewalks that exist along this portion of Old Chocolate Bayou Road. So the property owner just didn't feel like a sidewalk would be necessary on that tract of property, especially without the road improvements. So this property, it's going to be subdivided into two tracks. One of those tracks is essentially extremely hard to develop. It's right next, along Old Chocolate Bayou. They planned no development for it. Actually, we've even had conversations with C and R3 about possibly maybe taking on this property so they could have better management of the bayou itself. Tract one is where they want to build a single-family home on that property. So staff is recommending approval of the variance request to the sidewalks with conditions. And the conditions is that that subdivision variance would expire upon a change of use from single-family, and then lastly, upon further subdivision of the property. We feel under both of these conditions, it would give council the opportunity to reexamine if sidewalks could or could not be needed, or escrow money may be needed at that point. So, thank you.
All right, any questions? Any discussion? Is there anything in that about, and I, I think it was in that final section that you mentioned, but about the possibility, although I cannot foresee, but I don't foresee a lot of the things that have already taken place in this city in the last few years, that there would be sidewalks, ever?
Sorry, I pressed it wrong. I believe this portion of Old Chocolate Bayou is part of a major thoroughfare. So we would envision, obviously, a widening of that with a street profile, and then sidewalks that are with it. I, don't quote me, because I don't remember what profile it is on that. So it would be counterintuitive at this point to have a single-family resident put a sidewalk there, when in the future, the city, or whomever, how we do that through development, where you'd come in and actually have a different profile of that road in addition to the sidewalks on either side.
Okay. I figured. Just wanted to ask. You know, you have those sidewalks to nowhere in, in some of the cities. So, so that would be counterproductive. All right, anybody else?
I have a comment just to ask.
Sure.
So if, if it's on a thoroughfare, that there's supposed to be sidewalks, would they plot it, do they give that space up in the anticipation?
Yes, ma'am. We get the right-of-way dedication or whatever that, that's needed, based on the ultimate ride, the road width.
And they're giving that up, and that's not a big deal.
It is not, yes, ma'am.
All right, anybody else? All right, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
It's a great duo y'all got going there. Okay, all those in favor? All those opposed? And the motion carries six zero. All right, that was quick and easy. I'm going to ask for any council comments.
I have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Today's Juneteenth. I don't know why we are, we are not using this as a holiday. So whatever we need to do to add it to one of our holiday lists, may we talk about it in the future? Everybody else was off today except for us.
It was yesterday. Yeah, okay.
May we talk about it in the future on how to implement that into our city? As a list of our.
If you want, we could add that in the personnel policy. There's a list of holidays in that. And if you would like, we could add that to a future council agenda in order to amend the personnel policy and add it as a holiday.
I would appreciate talking about that.
Okay.
So it would be added as the day after that. Yeah, because Juneteenth was yesterday. So it would be, you celebrate the day off.
It would be on, on the day, or the, the next business day, just like we do with anything else.
Okay.
Okay.
Great. Good point. Anybody else? All right, I was going to mention Juneteenth, but I'm also going to mention Father's Day. And Happy Father's Day to all of our fathers here. I know that the one at our house is pretty important to us, so we want to recognize that, that, that position. If you hold it, congratulations, and thank you for all of your, all of your wise decisions throughout the years, because I know that's what they are. And if you have teenagers, they are not wise. All right. So there we have it. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Oh, finish it up. All right, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries six zero. Thank you very much. That was a quickie.